Once again, we are ready to roll. Take two.
All right, take two. Gia, are you there?
Yeah.
There she is. Hi, Gia. Thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Where's my camera working?
And we are ready when you are, okay?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fantastic, Gia. We thank you so much for joining us. Happy Monday. You just made it really, really great for us. Thank you, Gia. All right. Bye bye. Okay, again, welcome to those with us on Zoom and those watching on YouTube Live as well. As a reminder, this is a public work session of the Board of Education. It is not a public hearing. We do have several ways for the public to engage during our public meetings. First, members of the public can request to be on our agenda. Tonight, two members of the public have made that request. There is a form on our website for those who are interested in the future. Second, at the end of the work session, we do have time for public comments. To participate, please raise your hand in Zoom. When you raise your hand, you will receive a JOT form link. Please fill out the form before you speak and indicate the topic you wish to speak to. When it's time for public comment, we will unmute you. When you are addressing the board, you'll have three minutes to speak. We will let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining. When addressing the board, please state your name and your relationship to the district. We will not be answering direct questions or responding to comments tonight, but we'll make sure someone follows up with you to address your concerns. Our bylaws require individuals who wish to address the board to direct their comments to the entire board and not to individual board members, the superintendent, or other school district employees, or members of the audience. Our bylaws prohibit behavior that is intemperate, abusive, defamatory, or discourteous, or that otherwise interferes with the orderly conduct and timely completion of the board meeting. Our bylaws also exclude from the meeting an individual who engages in conduct that constitutes a breach of the peace. Once again, on behalf of my colleagues on the board, we are grateful to serve the community, and we appreciate your support. First item on the agenda is roll call. Tonight, Kristen Bull and Scott Muska are absent with notice. Next, communications. Secretary Michelle Beel tell will reference communications received by the board. And at this time, I believe 29 communications have been received. Michelle?
Good evening. Yes, so tonight we have 29 communications that were received through the district website. And as a reminder, those are the ones that are in our board packet. They are received by noon on the Wednesday prior to our meeting. So we have received an email from Matt Grease, who contacted the board regarding indoor air quality. District parents Megan Foster and Tammy Creeman contacted the board regarding concerns related to in-person instruction. The following district parents contacted the board regarding live streaming instruction for students in quarantine. Those include Anne Marie Booth, Joelle Kequa, Kirsten Arthurs, Iris Vider, Bridie Moffett, Laura Cox, Tara Donley, Jessica Opfer, and Lisa Atwater. The following district parents contacted the board regarding support for students in quarantine and/or quarantine protocols. Those included Adriana Monriquez, Angreeta Nupel, Meredith McCutcheon, Christina Wright, Matthew Mullen, Amanda Quinlan, Dawn Sills, Krista Dzinski, and Amy Chermside. Stephanie Meyerri contacted the board regarding relocating to the district and learning the process of serving on the board. District parent Margaret Simons contacted the board regarding mask protocols. Student Valerie Lampkins and parent Melanie Simka contacted the board regarding concerns related to full in-person learning and their desire to return to hybrid learning. District parent Suzanne Croissant contacted the board regarding mask protocols, live streaming, and the quarantine process. Community member Laura Cox contacted the board regarding negotiations. District parent Jessica Opfer contacted the board regarding communications. And district parent Julie Stalker contacted the board regarding identifying dyslexia and instruction. In addition, the board has received nine emails. These are ones that did not go through the district website since our March 8 meeting. As a reminder, these are not included in the board packet because they did not go through the district website. We received five emails from Andrew Weaver on various topics, including censorship, board priorities, clarification on prior meeting information, a FOIA request, and a link to a blog post. Michelle Chittick contacted the board regarding the budget and control questions. Meredith McCutcheon reached out regarding quarantine learning plans. And we received two emails from Jessica Opfer regarding the reporting of COVID cases. And I think that ends all of our communications.
Thank you, Michelle. Next on the agenda, citizens requesting placement on the agenda. There are two this evening, Andrew Weaver and Joshua Jostock. Andrew Weaver is listed first, so he will go first. And I think I clicked the right button.
Can you hear me?
Andrew, yes.
So my name's Andrew Weaver. I have two sons at Brooklyn's Elementary. So Kevin, would you like to address why all of a sudden a new message to start the meeting? It seems kind of odd when you guys are the ones sending cease and desist letters for people asking questions and emails from lawyers for a FOIA request that was never a FOIA request. It seems like an awfully weird statement for you guys to start with. It would probably be nice if you addressed that. But now I'll get to kind of my topic that I really want to talk about. So obviously, we're trying to recall four of our board members because at the end of the day, we have failed as a district to provide equal forms of education for all of our students, all of our students across all forms. Virtual campus has not met the needs of many of the virtual parents. They have reached out, and there's plenty of comments in the Board of Education packets where they're asking to be heard and they're not listened to. The remote parents have been very vocal about not being heard, that they are worried about going back to in-person, but the virtual campus does not meet their needs. They're not being heard. And then the in-person crowd group has been the victims of all of it and blamed for the problems that the district has created. It is the legal responsibility and the moral obligation for a public school to provide equal education to all students. And yet, the board has failed to do that, has failed to hold the administration accountable to do that. This is all while during the 2019-20 through 2020-21 school year, spending an additional $2.4 million on instruction and support services, which has yielded us less instruction time and increased administration and teachers' salaries. Again, $2.4 million during this time when our kids are not being educated properly, when we cannot come up with a plan to have our quarantine students educated properly, when we can't send out a survey to ask our parents advice on how we fix this problem. We are going into a year where we have seen wasted money constantly with no results. That would get anyone in the private industry fired, but yet, we have seven zero votes every single time. So again, it would be great, as many of us are in the parking lot, as we want to have real dialogue. At what point is the administration going to sit down?
30 seconds remaining.
And talk to the community? This cannot continue to go this way. So again, community, we are going to push forward to recall four of our board members because at this point, they do not represent the community. They are there to be the voice to hold the administration accountable. They have not done that. Again, any one of us would expect someone in our industries to be fired for this incompetence. So we are going to start looking to move forward.
10 seconds remaining.
About what are the next steps? Because this is not the results that we as a district want. We are not divided as parents, and I would welcome any one of the board members.
Thank you. Time is up. Thank you.
To us as a community, to actually talk to us.
All right, and our next speaker listed is Joshua Jostock. This could be Josh on Zoom here.
Hello, can you hear me?
Oh, there he is. Okay.
Yeah, hi, it's Josh. I'm gonna start my little timer I have for myself here. Good evening. Thanks for recording me the time to speak with you. Promise I'm not gonna try to go over my three minutes here. I do want to just very quickly thank Christina Whitmore. She's been great with correspondence on getting me on this agenda as I was having a hard time finding out the form to fill out. So thank you, Christina, if you're listening to this. Anyhow, I am the owner and director of Hope Field Change Counseling. I also joke that I'm a custodian, security guard, along with a top therapist. And I'm also a proud alum of the district. And I'm here to talk a little bit about mental health for the next two and a half minutes. So this pandemic has touched each and every one of us somewhere or another. When the pandemic first began, I started working with a lot of nurses. As it continued, it became doctors and nurses, and then relationship conflict. And then finally, my caseload started to fill up with high school and middle school students. And then in the late fall, teachers were starting to reach out to me. And I'm a former educator myself. I taught in public education for four school years. And colleagues were reaching out, and the bottom line is that teachers started reaching out at an alarming rate, and they were at the edge, whether it be depression, anxiety, excessive worry, trying to balance virtual teaching and childcare and recreating a learning environment. And I just applaud our teachers. So if there's any teachers listening, thank you for doing what you do, because I know it's not easy right now. So the reason I'm here tonight with my last minute and a half is I'm looking to help teachers, and I'm not going to stop until I can find a way, an avenue to help teachers at a greater level. I'm a one-man show. And I'm here tonight to pitch a teacher support group that I want to run this summer that I'm looking to help from districts. I've worked with districts before, Birmingham and Claussen and Troy, and we have mainly done that for students that are struggling. But as I'm seeing teachers struggle, I think the best way for me to help is offer a support group. I've run grief support groups before through Went Funeral Home. And now it's time to turn my attention to teachers. So I want to run a six-session group that would take place over 12 weeks this summer. I know it's hard for teachers to find time during the school year with everything going on. I have access to counseling interns that are getting their masters in counseling to assist me in running this group. I have had a hard time finding support group for teachers. Mainly, they're just vent groups. They all just get on Zoom and vent, which is an important part of being a teacher. I've been there too. But I really want to have the structure. The topics would include tools for coping with anxiety and acute stress, communication techniques, and helping to find your assertive voice as an educator, struggles with work-home-life detachment, feeling of burnout and depression, addressing and being attentive to your mental health as an educator, finding and maintaining support as an educator. These topics could change, but this is a basic outline for now. Each session would be two hours long. I'm not sure if this is the appropriate forum to ask for this part of it, but I'm just going to do it with the last remaining time. I'm asking for $1,500 to run this group this summer. I've worked with other schools, like I've said before. In my mind, this is the cutting edge of preventative mental health well-being. And my hope is that this group can feel a lot better heading into the 2021-2022 school year. I hope that I can work with Rochester Community Schools and other districts in the area to help as many teachers as I possibly can. So I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna stop. Thank you for your time.
Have some, and I did not bring them with me tonight, so I will report those at the next meeting.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you, Michelle. Okay, and now to the work part of the work session. And our initial topic is internal controls. And will this be you, Dana?
Yes, it will.
Excellent.
Thank you. I am very pleased to welcome the district's business office and purchasing department teams to present to you internal control processes. This presentation is typically done annually and is a requirement of Statement on Auditing Standards Number 99, Consideration of Fraud. We are very proud of this team because it is not in an accountant's nature to be a public speaker. But our team is stepping out of their comfort zone to share with you their expertise, which is vital to the efficient and accurate processing of district financial data. Kristy Bieke, Director of Financial Services, will begin the presentation. So welcome, Kristy.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
We sure can.
Perfect. Thank you. So good evening. Like Dana said, we are here tonight to present to you the annual internal controls overview. This is a joint presentation prepared by the business office and the purchasing department. So we'll start with some introductions and a general overview of internal controls. Then each staff member will provide a more detailed explanation of the controls that are present within their specific role. As Dana mentioned, I'm Kristy Bieke, Director of Financial Services. Debbie Corby is our payroll supervisor. Stephanie Plummer is our grants accountant. We have Diana Wetstone, currently working in accounts receivable. Lydia Doka is our general ledger accountant. And Rena Sun is our accounts payable accountant. So what is internal control? The most simple way to explain this is that it is documented policies and procedures that are designed, implemented, and monitored by management with the objective to prevent or detect and correct material misstatements, whether due to fraud or error in the management's financial statements. So what does this intend to accomplish? So proper internal controls help us accomplish our objectives. Those objectives include compliance with laws and regulations, the accomplishment of our mission to provide relevant and reliable data, economical and efficient use of our resources, and to safeguard the district assets against fraud or error. So there are five areas of internal controls. And it all starts with what we call the control environment. This is most commonly referred to as the tone at the top, which establishes the importance of internal controls, including expected standards of conduct to the entire organization. Risk assessment, this is the process of asking, where do our most critical risks lie? Then we design controls to mitigate those risks, and we continuously assess for new risks. New opportunities for risk include business changes, such as new software implementation, new compliance factors, or even internal or external policy changes. Most importantly, when speaking about risk assessment, we have segregation of duties. It's a basic building block of risk management. It separates key processes so that fraud or error are less manageable. Our control activities are the tools. They're the policy, the procedure, the processes put in place. They can be both manual and automated, and they help prevent or reduce the risks that can impede the accomplishment of the organization's mission. So commonly used control activities we'll share here throughout this presentation include documentation, approval and authorization, and reconciliation and review. Information and communication. The information about controls should be communicated to management timely so that any shortfalls can be addressed promptly. Information should be shared continuously and should be shared in all directions. Monitoring is a review process. It's an ongoing evaluation of the entire organization. Some examples of the monitoring include monitoring the tone at the top, maintaining an effective organizational structure, reviewing budget to actual reports, and completing a monthly financial closing review process. So we talk about management overseeing the control process, but we have to know who oversees management. So the oversight of management is the responsibility of the Board of Education. So how does the board participate in the control process and oversight? The board is responsible to set that tone at the top. The board also reviews and approves all accounts payable registers, which are included in the board packets at each monthly meeting. The board reviews and approves all budgets and budget amendments. And the board participates in our annual financial statement audit. Audit standards require communication with those charged with governance, and annual fraud inquiries are performed direct from the auditors to the board members. Additionally, a more detailed financial review happens monthly with management and the SBOC committee. The SBOC stands for Superintendent's Business and Operations Committee, and it is currently made up of three board members. During these meetings, we review detailed budget-to-actual reporting, in-depth budget amendment meetings, and a discussion of all material transactions. So in an audit, materiality is calculated as a dollar threshold, and it's based specifically on the district. Those single small dollar amounts are not considered material to the financial statements because they would not mislead users if omitted. The internal considerations for us are not only considering the dollar value of the transaction, but we also consider the nature of the transaction. So now I'd like to move on to our detailed presentation, and Debbie is up first with payroll.
Good evening. I'm Debbie Corby, and I'm with the payroll department. When a new employee is hired by the district, the HR department enters that employee into Business Plus. This includes the employee's social security number, date of birth, address, hire date, et cetera. Payroll does not have the ability to add anyone to the system. Payroll will then add any payroll-related information for that new employee. This would include things like their W-4 tax withholding, direct deposit information, their individual state of Michigan retirement plan, and any other deductions that may be necessary, as well as their payment information. This payment information is provided to payroll by the HR department, and it tells the payroll department, I'm sorry, how to pay this employee, whether they're going to be paid on a contract or if they're hourly, and what their rate of pay will be. Once all this has been entered, it is then checked for accuracy, and then the new employee is ready to be paid. This is an important control as we are unable to pay any individual that hasn't been entered by the HR department. Each year, we complete the contract information, payments, and W-2 data for the key employees of the district. It is verified that these components balance, and it is then provided to the auditors for review. Key employees would include our superintendent, various members of the executive staff, the payroll department employees, as well as a few individuals from the business office. This ensures that all staff with influence have not been paid in excess of their contract wages or any other authorized payments that they may be permitted for that year. This also allows for an independent third party to review. Based upon the reports generated during the payroll process, we receive the totals for the various deductions from our employees, such as their federal and state taxes, their ORS retirement, tax sheltered annuities, and garnishments. Payments for Omni, which is for our tax-sheltered annuities, and for Valic, for the special pay plan when applicable, are set up on a wire template within the Comerica site. Payroll only has access to these two templates, so no other payment can be set up or made by this department. It is then reviewed and approved by another member of the business office. Once approved, the payment is released by the other member. A batch is created in the BP system for garnishment deductions, and then the checks are issued through our accounts payable department. Federal and state taxes are paid each payroll. Well, excuse me, federal taxes are paid each payroll. State taxes are paid monthly on the last pay of the month for the total that was withheld during that month. And ORS payments for the various retirement plans are compiled, and the payments are made with each biweekly payroll. Every payroll, we reconcile wages and keep the cumulative totals for easier processing of quarterly 941s and the annual W-2. Next up, new to the business department and a wonderful addition is our grant accountant, Stephanie Plummer.
Thank you, Debbie, for that warm welcome. Good evening, everyone. My name is Stephanie Plummer, and I am the grant accountant for the district. I am here to speak about internal controls related to the grant-funded programs. The district receives federal, state, and local grant monies. However, due to the pandemic, the district has also received COVID relief grant funds. The COVID funds are monitored the same way as any other federally funded grant program. When a grant application budget is approved, a grant contract or award letter will follow with the final amount of grant funds awarded. When this documentation is received, accounts and budgets are set up by the accounting director in our Business Plus accounting system based on the approved grant award. When expenditures begin hitting the grants, fund requests are prepared by the accountant and then approved by the director before they are submitted. The funds are requested by either a CMS drawdown or based on the grantor's specific request. For example, the grantor may request that an invoice be submitted on a monthly or a quarterly basis. Next is the control environment section. In addition to all of the control activities that the district utilizes, the district requires that grant-funded purchases be authorized and approved by each respective grant administrator. Another environmental control is that grant funds are requested on a reimbursement basis only. A fund request will not be submitted if there have been no expenditures charged for the grant. Lastly, there is the monitoring and compliance component. The grant accountant sets up monthly and/or quarterly reconciliation meetings with the grant administrators to review activity. Grant expenditure activity and compliance monitoring is reviewed during these meetings. This includes payroll, benefits, all purchases, conferences, and PD to verify that all expenditures are allowable. Employee payroll is verified to verify, I'm sorry, excuse me, employee payroll is reviewed to verify that the correct employees are being charged to the correct accounts with the correct dollar amounts. The same goes for all purchases, conferences, and PD. Ongoing expenditure monitoring is also available to the grant administrator through Google Sheets that are prepared, updated, and shared between the business office and the grant administrator. The Google Sheets are updated each payroll. The meetings ensure that the grant funds are reconciled before each grant fund request is submitted. Thank you for your time. Now I would like to introduce Diana Wetstone, who will speak about the accounts receivable internal control process.
Thank you, Stephanie. Good evening, board and cabinet members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you about the work we do for Rochester Community Schools. Currently, I serve as the accounts receivable accountant in the business office. The district receives revenue from a number of different sources. As mentioned by Stephanie, we receive grant revenue that helps fund many different programs. We also receive revenue from federal and state sources, state aid, for example. Revenue from local taxing authorities is another source of general fund dollars, and they are also the source of our bond and sinking fund revenue. We have different programs that charge tuition, like preschool and caring steps, so we process these revenues accordingly. The district also receives donations from time to time that may be earmarked for a particular purpose. Additionally, pardon me, additionally, we collect revenue through our online payment system for many different student and community-related activities. Everything from school-age care fees to pay-to-play fees to advanced placement testing fees, it all needs to be properly accounted for and recorded in our financial and recorded in our financial software, Business Plus. For every item coming into our bank account, we have a source document that verifies the details of the deposit, whether it is a wire transfer from the city of Rochester Hills or a student payment from Ilio, even a $3.90 receipt from a lunch purchased in one of our cafeterias. All of these items require proper documentation so that we know which bucket to record it in. And that leads me to the next report. Cat-- next point, sorry. The cash receipts are appropriately recorded to Business Plus, our accounting system. The cash receipts are recorded numerically in order so they can be easily referenced if needed. Additionally, we are now attaching deposit documentation directly to the cash receipt in Business Plus so that users can drill down to view the details if desired. And of course, the paper trail is still available too, if needed. Checks that are received in the mail in the business office are deposited as timely as possible. The deposits are secured in our locked safe until the courier delivers them to Comerica. Okay, moving on. I'd like to discuss cash handling at our school buildings. I'd like to quickly mention gate receipts. We have specific procedures in place for athletic event cash handling because of the amount of cash that is typically involved. This is obviously not a normal year, and we have not had any gate receipts this year. But in a typical year, we would review the procedures with our athletic directors. Members of the business office occasionally pop into an event to audit the process and observe that procedures are being followed just to ensure that the money collected at the gate makes it to the safe or deposit the next business day. As you know, we have many schools and programs that collect cash and checks for different purposes. So to ensure that everyone is on the same page, we have procedures in place to protect our employees and the money that has been entrusted to us. Folks who collect cash and checks are required to prepare a cash slip with a detailed breakdown of currency and checks. Cash is counted by two individuals, the bookkeeper and the coach, for instance. Both should sign the cash slip. Then if the money is not ready to be deposited at that time, it will go immediately into a locked safe. We require copies of all checks and rosters detailing who paid with cash and the check numbers of those who paid with check. Once the bookkeeper is ready to make a deposit, she will complete a pre-numbered, building-specific cash receipt voucher. These are three ply. One copy goes to the coach or the staff member. One copy comes to the business office with the deposit information, and the building keeps the original. All vouchers are accounted for numerically, and if one is not used, it will be kept as a void. So going on, next slide. Because the district has many bookkeepers and programs that handle cash and checks, it is necessary to have many controls in place. Numbered deposit bags are used. Once these bags are sealed, they stay sealed until Comerica receives them. The deposit bag number is recorded on a deposit log. Each building maintains their own log. The district courier picks up available deposits daily from each of our buildings. Olsey, our courier, signs out the deposit on the log when he picks up the deposit from the building, and he locks them in his safe in his delivery van until he reaches the bank, Comerica. Once the deposits are submitted, he then brings the deposit transaction receipts to the business office as another source document. So just to recap, we have many internal controls in place to ensure deposits are handled safely and securely. We have building-specific, pre-numbered, three-ply cash receipts. We require all checks to be photocopied. We use pre-printed, three-ply deposit slips to ensure the accuracy of the depository account. We require cash slips and detailed rosters. We use pre-numbered bank deposit bags, and we track these bank bags on a deposit transaction log. And just another brief note, we prohibit bookkeepers from making change from a cash deposit that is locked in the safe at the building. Additionally, any petty cash that is dispensed must have a legitimate original receipt. We do not reimburse sales tax, and we do not permit IOUs in any circumstances. So that wraps things up for accounts receivable. Let me introduce to you Rochester Community Schools' purchasing department, Jennifer Fickell, our purchasing supervisor, and Debbie Whitlock, purchasing secretary. Thank you.
Thank you, Diana. Hello, I'm Jennifer Fickell, the purchasing department supervisor. And if we could go to the next slide, thanks. The way in which we procure items and services for the district is controlled in a few different ways. The majority require using a purchase order. On average, we issue just under 3,000 purchase orders each fiscal year. Both micro and small purchases are controlled with Board of Education policy, and the state legislature imposes a threshold for purchases every fall, which require formal competitive bidding. Additionally, our business software system uses workflow approvals as a control by routing purchase requests to all budget approvers for any given fund or program or grant. Sometimes there are five or six administrators that will approve a purchase order request before it converts to a purchase order. Also, potential fixed asset purchases always route to the Director of Finance, and purchases over the competitive bid limit will always route to the Deputy Superintendent of Business Affairs. All of these controls safeguard our budget, and in the case of competitive bidding, they add protection against conflicts of interest while encouraging better pricing as well as fairness. Another control that the purchasing department is responsible for is the management of our vendor files. This is to separate the duties between adding vendors and paying vendors, which is what the Accounts Payable Department does. This makes sure that those two tasks are not completed by the same person. Like the thresholds, nothing has changed too much this year, but as a reminder, we do require all of our purchases to associate with a vendor, which we've approved only after receiving valid IRS W-9 forms as well as our own RCS vendor application, which specifies what service or item the vendor is providing, whether it's technology, musical instruments, or cafeteria tables. And we utilize the vendor application to verify that information matches what was declared on the W-9 before we activate the vendor in the purchasing software system and making it available to staff to select for purchase requests. Secondly, when dealing with federal programs, we have the ability to check for vendors that have been suspended or debarred with the government on the website, sam.gov. Third, only the purchasing department staff are able to make changes to vendor files if there's ever a request to change information that has already been submitted. And then finally, we review the vendor files annually to inactivate any dormant ones. For example, we have over 10,000 vendor files in our system right now, but only just over only 5,000 of them are active, so about half. So we don't delete vendors, but we don't want to lose the historical records. But if we needed to reactivate a vendor, we would require updated forms using the same process all over again to ensure that our file is current. What is new to the purchasing department since we last presented controls is that we've stepped into the first half of the budget card process, something that has been historically held in the business office. This assumes the control of issuing and maintaining the district's budget cards to staff members. Budget cards are used for high-volume, low-dollar amount needs and occasionally to purchase items in brick-and-mortar type settings or with working with smaller businesses who are not really equipped to operate in a purchase order environment. That said, we are finding more and more larger businesses who are transitioning to systems that will only take payment cards rather than the traditional purchase order and invoicing method. So as the marketplace is changing, it's important to have the appropriate controls in place for budget cards, just like we do with the purchase orders. And to that point, all the thresholds that I just reviewed apply to purchasing with budget cards as well. So what prompted the transition of moving budget card maintenance to purchasing was, again, the internal control of separation or segregation of duties from our former Director of Finance. And one of the upsides to moving tasks is definitely the opportunity to examine processes and identify opportunities for improvement and efficiency. And that's exactly what happened for us. So I'm going to let my colleague Debbie Whitlock explain those improvements to the budget card program on this slide.
Hello, my name is Debbie Whitlock, and I am the purchasing secretary. I'll be discussing the district budget cards. Purchasing follows strict policy and procedures when issuing, processing, and increasing budget cards to employees. Cardholders lists are reviewed annually by each department supervisor. New budget cards are processed after cardholder reviews policy and signs off on all rules regarding purchases. All newly issued budget cards are loaded with an approved amount of money by the purchasing department. When budget cards have to be increased, the budget is checked by purchasing prior to the increases. If needed, a purchase order is in place to cover large expenses. All increases are approved by cardholders supervisors. Comerica, our credit card company, contacts both purchasing and the employee if any suspicious activities occur on the card. There are presently 239 district budget cards, and all budget cards expire at the end of each fiscal year. In addition, all new cardholder forms and increase forms are sent to purchasing electronically. This is in place so that confidential information will not be lost or sent throughout the district. Once cardholders make purchases, they are responsible for keeping receipts to reconcile activity and smart data, which is overseen by the business office. Lydia will explain this in more detail later in the presentation. Next up to talk about accounts payable is Rena. Thank you.
Thank you. This is Rena Sun, the Account Payable Content for Rochester Community Schools. I will talk about the internal control over the AP process. We have various internal controls over the AP transaction cycle. Just like what Purchase Department has mentioned, any purchase over $500 requires a PO to pay for the invoices. We, upon receiving the invoices, I will process the invoice into BP and to match the invoice to PO to get invoice payment approved through the approval path. The internal control is also placed over the receiving part. All the school secretaries will need to log into BP to do receiver in the system to make sure the order has been received before the invoice can be paid. Well, there were some invoices over $500 without PO, such as like phone bills, because their amounts may vary from month to month. So for those invoices, I will pay them directly from the accounts. However, they will be directed to the Financial Service Director for approval. Next slide, please. Okay, so internal controls are built into our system BP through the workflow. First of all, we need to emphasize is that we don't pay overstatements or quotes. Even if they were sent to us, we don't pay for them. We require the original invoices. Upon receiving the original invoices, they are scanned into the system to match up to PO for review or for approval. And would you please go to the next slide? Yep, this is the sample workflow that one invoice has been scanned into BP and to match up to the PO. I will approve them in AP part, and it will be routed to the PO creator. That's basically the upper part of the picture. And then it will be routed to the budget administrator. In this case, it's Pete, the Director of Facility. And when they approve, review, and approve the invoice, the invoice is ready for the payment. As you can see in the lower part of the picture, the attachments may be viewed by all the approvers because the invoices, as well as the backups, have been scanned into BP and waiting for review. Let's go to the next slide. Okay, when it comes to large quantities of supply invoices and online orders, those orders and invoices are approved for payment before uploading. We basically have the vendors send us the spreadsheet listing invoices at the end of the month, and then I will send the invoice-- the spreading sheet listing invoices over to the school bookkeepers, secretaries for their review. If there are some orders have not been received, they will be removed from the uploading Excel sheets. Typical uploads are for Staples, School Specialties, Amazon, and several other facility operation supply vendors. Only the approved transactions will be paid via uploading. The next page is the example of the upload. From the picture, you can see that we have the PO numbers and account numbers listed, and only the approval approved invoices can be paid. At the last column, you can see that, paid by invoices. All right, let's go to the next slide. Okay, so the internal control is also placed over the payment processing. As part of the internal control process on the check run day, I will only-- I will approve only approved invoices in BP again to check if totals are matched before any payment is actually paid. As a school district, we do have a large amount of invoice to process every other week. So internal control play a very important role in the accurate payment processing. So last check run, which was on March 11th, we have paid out $1,612,888.19 from all of the general fund. There are altogether 136 checks run out. And also, for the EFT direct payments, we pay for Staples, Amazon, and the SIP ad. We pay nearly $70,000 in that check run. And for the BP, for the bound accounts, we have nearly $70,700,000 amount of payments, and there are altogether totaling eight checks. So this concludes my presentation over internal control over a count payable transaction cycle. And let's welcome Lydia Doka, my coworker, to talk about internal control over the general ledger. Thank you.
Good evening. This is Lydia Doka, general ledger accountant. I will basically wrap up the whole presentation with the processes on general ledger. Basically, general ledger reviews are the part of the internal control activity. They pull together all those individual pieces that we were discussing throughout the presentation for the accounts receivable, accounts payable, payroll, purchases, purchasing, and completes the monthly accounting cycle for all funds. In a control environment, this is accomplished through the typical process of bank reconciliation, which utilizes the method of three-way matches of the source document to the posting of the general ledger, and it's traced back to the bank statement. The key here is the timeliness in order to discover what was omitted, what was in error or potential fraudulent activity, and to allow for the immediate response to remedy the problem if there is any. In essence, we're trying to confirm that we received what we expected to receive for the revenue, the sources that Diana mentioned earlier, which will be starting from the largest, the federal and state grant, grants for the draws or property tax receipts, online payments for enrichment or SAC or pre-K or various other school fees. The smallest section of the revenue probably comes from the cash receipt, especially during these COVID times, since we shifted mostly to the online payments. For the withdrawals or expenditures that we identify on the bank statement, we want to make sure that we recognize what these are for, and we know that these all have been approved, which was also discussed in accounts payable task of the process. and we know that these all have been approved, which was also discussed in accounts payable task of the process. We're looking at the regular vendor invoices, any auto pays that will include the utility bills, various payroll items or taxes, ORS, Blue Cross Blue Shield, sub expenditure, credit card fees, budget card fees, or arbiter payments. Each month, we also transfer the balances they're owed from one fund to another or from the funds to the common pool cash. Occasionally, we might see some wire transfers. And all these items should be also available for approval in the board packet, the section of the monthly financial summary. What are the safeguards that we have in place for the control environment? So there are two types that I'm distinguishing for the Comerica Bank. Positive pay accounts are the ones that are being utilized for any payments rather than using a common cash account. This is so we're not drawing directly of our major pool of money. Each time a payment batch is issued for payment, only the approved and selected items can be paid. BP creates a file with Oakland Schools where the dollar amount is verified for the positive pay with the Comerica. And if this is not done, the payment cannot be processed. We have dollar amount thresholds that are set up for the auto payments and ACH pools. And these are created based on the anticipated maximum amount of the payment. For instance, these thresholds helped us to alert us from unusual increases in a budget card fees or any utility bills that came through and the ACH deductions were not possible at that point. Both the ACH payments or the wires require to have templates. And the only person that can create them in Comerica Bank would be the Director of Finance or the Executive Director. And they have to be approved by the second authorized person, usually this is a coordinator or any other person from the business office. One employee typically initiates an ACH payment or the wire. And another person who is authorized has to verify the amount, the vendor, and the purpose in order to approve it. No outside of the template or purpose ACH and wire transfers are approved regardless of the organizational status of the payment originator. The Business Plus controls that are in place include the workflows that we discussed earlier for the accounts payable or purchasing. Very typical part of the control is the journal entries. We are recognizing two types of them, the corrective and the recurring one. Regardless of what this is for, we need to have a standard form that's usually approved by the, or signed off by the supervisor or the building principal in order for this to be posted in our Budget Plus. And ultimately, all of those journal entries are being signed off by the Finance Director. The most effective internal control environment feature in BP that I'm considering would be the budget blocks. These set budget limits restrict the user from overspending. Anytime an attempt is made to spend more than is allowed, the transaction cannot be posted, whether this is a journal entry or an invoice. Basically, these budget blocks are imposed on everything except for payroll that has other control practices in place. What are the other control activities that we are using? Well, budget sheet reconciliation and also budget current expenditure reconciliation would be the two other ones. Each line item, whether it's an asset or liability on a balance sheet, must have a schedule, work paper, or a document that's providing the detail to how we arrive at that balance that's listed. Besides cash, we look at other items such as AR or prepaid. Well, we're currently in a time of the year that we are receiving invoices for the expenditures that will not be incurred until the next school year. Well, these are considered prepaid expenditures. Similarly, some departments such as SAC and pre-K is also receiving revenues for services that we will not render until the next school year. And these are classified as deferred revenue. So we've got to make sure that we have these items in correct places because any error is considered to be not acceptable for our final ultimate goal to have our external audit paperwork in place. For the budget card reconciliation, we technically utilize two systems. It's the card management system that's solely accessible by the purchasing. And it was discussed earlier by that department and we know what the procedures are. The second one, Smart Data, basically provides listing of the transactions per the account. And there's certain documentation that's required and is typically collected by the business, the building secretaries and includes the transaction, itemized receipts, GL account number, or the description of the purchase, also referencing the PO number. Once we have all the documentation in place, this is input into Smart Data and expense reports are produced for the supervisors to sign off on. The Coordinator of the Business Office reviews the documentation as well, prepares the file for posting to general ledger, verifies that the total monthly figure also matches what's on the settlement report of the card management system, and traces that number to the bank statement before this all activity is posted in general ledger. Now, if these are the traditional standard procedures that we have in place, what's out there that's new since the last presentation on internal controls that we had? Well, that will be the next slide. We changed the way we process our internal fund accounts, charges, payments, and so on per the provision of the GSB 84. Basically, we switched from the Fund 610 to Fund 290. And instead of the district serving the fiduciary role, we're not having a control of the individual internal accounts as well. What that means that instead of the having convenient in and out accounts, we're using the set of three accounts for the fund balance, expenditures, and revenues. We also implemented yet new online payment and registration system, Elio. And we are technically using this district-wise by most of the departments except for maybe one. And we also encourage that the systems used for all the participants in effort to minimize the cash handlings in the buildings. With the COVID situations, we also had a need to come up with a product that would be more district-wise due to something that would offer like a touchless payment options rather than bringing the cash or checks to the administrative building. This is significantly reducing the risk of fraud since we want to have less of the cash handling as possible. Virtual Campus is a completely brand-new program that's established this year due to the situation. And as a result of this, we also had to set up a set of new GL account numbers. And we're tracking respective expenditures per the building. This program is expected to continue for the years to come. So we've got to make sure that we have the charter accounts lined up for what we need going forward. As Stephanie mentioned earlier, we are also receiving new pandemic grants. Number of COVID relief funds that emerged as a result of the situation that we, the district took advantage from is out there for us to utilize so the programs can continue. Finally, I just wanted to touch base on how the situation technically affected the our ledgers or reconciliation process. So a few months back, when we received a number of revenues for the events that were canceled, basically, we had a large number of refunds in what used to be before is sitting in the deposit section, all of a sudden was in an expenditure section. So there were, these are the items that are unusual, different to the general ledger that we normally don't see. So we as accountants have to be open-minded and see what can really affect the ledger and just make sure that we monitor this going forward just so we have a better determination or we have a better view of knowing if these trends are because of the pandemic or if this is something that's not related to this. With this said, I just wanted to call back for our Director, Christine, to close out our presentation.
Thank you, Lydia, and thank you to everyone else who presented tonight. We appreciate your time and effort. There's one other additional control in place that's really worth mentioning. It doesn't necessarily fit into a specific job. But we want to mention that what we have here at Rochester in the business office, it's a little different. It's a little bit of an outside-the-box thinking, but we do a business office job rotation. So we're just now completing the final phase of a job rotation between Diana and Rena. And they were able to kind of swap their positions of AP and AR. And I want to emphasize how much this does for us as a team, such as expanding the knowledge of our department. Most importantly, bringing fresh eyes on our processes and controls already in place. And it's meant to improve our level of service to the district. So even though we're moving our team members, it's really important to remember that all of our controls remain in place. So thank you again, everyone. Our final slide opens this up for comments or questions, or Matt or Dana, if you have anything to add, please do.
Thank you, team. You did a great job. Are there any questions from the board?
First, I want to thank your team for stepping maybe out of their comfort zone and presenting today. I know that we never want to think that there might be fraud in our own business, but we've all seen those headlines, right? That, and we never want to be a part of that. I especially like the job rotation to give different eyes to that and to see the different pieces that could help improve our systems. So I appreciate all the checks and balances we have. I did have one question from the very first, I think, portion that was presented on the payroll portion. And I know that we said that HR submits an individual and then payroll sets them up in the system and they get paid. But my question was, if I worked in HR and I decided that all my cousins would be, it would be great for them to receive extra checks, where does the check come in, check and balance come in so that payroll gets those and they don't just enter them in the system?
That is a great question. So I suppose somebody could fill out all of the paperwork, but there is a process in HR and Beth can speak to that better than I can. Do you want to talk about your process of onboarding someone?
So in HR, we make sure that there's a notice of employment or adjustment that is approved by a number of people, usually myself and/or Matthew McDaniel. So the notice of adjustment would be the information that the person is paid from. That is, we make sure that we match that up to the contract if there is a collective bargaining agreement. And that process then goes through the HR process for approval prior to going to the payroll department. So there are also a workflow within Human Resources that makes sure that the person is being paid in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement or contract, whatever that might be.
And I guess just to follow up on that, so if I filled out the paperwork for my cousin and submitted that, that goes through a number of steps in HR as well prior to it going to payroll for that person to be paid?
Correct. Thank you.
Just, it's important to note too that payroll cannot create a person. So, right, so we don't even have that authority to do or that access to do. That person has to be set up in the payroll system by HR.
And again, by multiple people, though. It's not just one person.
I bet Shashin Prison wishes they would have had that in place, you know? Movie reference. Any other questions? Mike, yeah?
Yeah, so a few years ago, we were talking about this financial system that we were getting from, we were part of a conglomerate with Oakland Schools, right? And we were struggling with that. Is that kind of all, you know, when Rena was talking about Smart Data, is that all part of that system, the business system that we were tied into? Oh, do you remember that business system we were, that we purchased or were part of the conglomerate with Oakland Schools? We were struggling with that for a few years.
Yeah, that's Business Plus. Come a long way. All of the districts in the company. So, you know, when we need something new, it's kind of hard to get it to the proper, I guess. But it has that system that was all the way through there. That system has a lot of those controls inside of the system. Right now, Chrissy is working on just, you know, become more. It's working. It's been painful, but it's getting better.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Comments? Okay, all right. Let's see, Dana, we do have one hand raised in the Zoom. And I want to see if it's a comment directly related to this topic of internal controls. So I want to ask Wendy, Wendy Nowert, can you hear me? Is this, is your hand raised to address this topic? Or is it something more general and you'd prefer to reserve it till the end?
Well, it's regarding payroll in general and raises. So wherever you want to put me, whenever it is, wherever it is, the best spot, I'll leave that up to you guys.
Okay. Dana, what do you think? Now or at the end? But I'm not sure what raises means. Okay, yeah, we'll save that to the end, Wendy. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, so next topic on the agenda, facilities update. Is this you also, Dana?
Yes, thank you. Cindy Linder and I would like to present to you a status report for the Bond Capital Projects Fund. It was of today. And we will start with an overview of the timeline. It's something that you guys have seen before, but we've updated it. And then we'll go through some highlights of projects by year. We'll give you a summary, a cost summary of completed projects. And then we'll talk about some upcoming and pending projects. And then there will be time for questions and answers afterwards. So with the timeline, this is a timeline that you have seen in many of the bond project presentations with some updates. The timeline begins in October of 14, when the district's strategic planning process with the district's strategic planning process, which identified possible deficiencies in the district's technology and infrastructure. ATI 2020 Committee was formed in December of 2014 to assess the district's technology and infrastructure needs. In March of 2015, the TI 2020 Committee encouraged the district to move forward with urgency to address those. In March of 2015, the TI 2020 Committee encouraged the district to move forward with urgency to address those deficiencies. The district worked with consulting firms to better define the critical needs and 235 million in needs was identified at that time. The district recommended that the board approve a $185 million bond proposal, ballot proposal in May of 2015, because at that time, the district was retiring some of its bonded debt and had the opportunity to keep the debt millage the same, at the same rate for up to 105, 185 million in bonds. In November of 2015, voters in the community approved the $185 million bond issue to address those critical infrastructure and technology needs. The bonds were issued in two series. Series one was issued in February of 2016 for 128 million. At that time, project priorities were set, which are as follows. Number one, to enhance student and staff safety and security, to address critical infrastructure needs, three, to improve technology, and four, to set standards for building finishes, furniture, equipment, and technology. Projects funded with Series One bonds were completed by June of 2020, and those projects have been audited. The audit report was issued in January of 2021. Series Two was issued in April of 2019 for the remaining $57 million. We move to the next slide. We'll talk about the projects that were approved in year one. In the first year of the bond, the district concentrated on projects that were easier to design and complete. For example, many of the secure vestibules could be constructed in existing spaces without the need for an addition. Some of the oldest buses were replaced at that time. It is important to note that all of the budgets for these projects are approved by the board and they're audited on an annual basis. So if we move to the next slide, for projects beginning in two year, in year two and after, the projects became more complicated and required the district to prioritize needs to fit within the existing budget. The district was determined that projects scheduled at the end of the construction period would have the same opportunity as the projects that took place in the early years. So some of the projects in year two. Well, first I should go here one. So those are those minimum, those easier to do projects. And then Cindy is going to talk about your one technology projects.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. Hi, everyone. My name is Cindy Linder and I'm the Executive Director of Technology and Strategic Initiatives. We'd like to thank the community again for supporting the $185 million bond initiative in 2015. 32 million of the bond was for technology improvements, and our primary goal was to support curriculum and instruction in district operations. However, in order to do this, we had to have a very systematic approach. The focus of the first year had to be all infrastructure related. This is everything that you see on the slide above and more. This is the tech that you don't see or you don't think about, as long as everything is working. During this time, we also needed to develop a phased in approach, similar to building a house. The drawings come first, permits, foundation. You can't really jump to something else. And in our case, we couldn't move to say devices without a wireless network for them to run on. So we really had to layer in our technologies so that we could move forward. Also, a key focus from the start was sustainability. Technology has a shelf life and we must have a process and funding to sustain the technology that we are installing. So during this first year, we really did focus on that infrastructure. So we did wireless updates, our storage area network firewall, content filters, just really all those, those deep network infrastructure items. Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy. So year two projects include Hager and Musson Elementary additions and renovations. In order to do that work, there, there was work done with their, the playgrounds, the playgrounds had to be relocated because of where the additions set. These were more complicated projects. In September, the board approved Stony Creek and Heart Track improvements, the West Middle School addition and renovation, and Rochester High Athletic Complex addition and renovation. And you remember, for a long time, we had that earth retainage system going on to make that project happen. Now, whenever I think of that, I think of really expensive, you know, retaining walls. Also, in that year, the board approved the Hamlin Elementary addition and renovation, Baldwin Elementary addition and renovation, network video cameras, the voice over IP phone system, and then the building HVAC automated system integration. So that was really a complicated project because when we built the additions, the new HVAC system hooked into the old. And in order for the automation system to work, everything had to talk to each other. Because the Jason Steinbrink and his team can electronically control temperatures that go up, you know, right before people come into the school and go down after everyone's left for the day. So that was really a challenging piece of that puzzle. Cindy?
All right. So as we are working on infrastructure needs, we also began our technology committees and a classroom pilot. The pilot was across six buildings with two classrooms in each at elementary, middle school, and high school. We included teachers that were really beginners with technology as well as those that were advanced. And we also looked for representation from all areas, so specials, ILS, math, special education. And this process really led us to a greater understanding of the classroom needs and helped us develop the tech solutions to support them. This included smart interactive flat panels in the classrooms, along with laptops for our teachers and a stand up desk for flexibility within the classroom. Once the infrastructure was complete, our top priority was also to deploy multiple mobile labs to the schools to support instruction and testing. After that, we finalized our teacher device plans and purchasing and started adding on the next layer of infrastructure technology. So now that we have the, the foundation to build on, we could add more. So that was district wide systems like phones and video cameras. We also had to plan and purchase all of the technology for an addition. So when we're talking about adding on a bank of classrooms at a school, that's an entire addition. So all technology has to be outfitted for that space. Switches, cabling, copiers, PA and clock systems, phones, wireless cameras, and much more. Back over to you, Mrs. Taylor.
Thank you. So moving on to year three, so we have your one projects going, your two projects going, and now we come to, to year three. It's amazing the amount of work that happened in the district over that amount of time. Pete Musio and his team, working with Frank Rewald's team, really did a very good job on keeping all this stuff straight. We met as a team every single week. We had a, let's see, was it the Woodward Room we called the War Room, where we would go and duke out if we needed to, you know, value engineer something to keep it within budget. It was, it was a lot of fun, but it was a lot of work. So in year three, that was when the Schultz Building addition and renovation was approved by the board. That was a really complicated project. It more than doubled the size of that facility and, you know, but it's a beautiful facility. Adams High School renovation also was approved in year three. That was another really challenging construction project. Remember that there was drainage issues at the baseball field and we ended up moving the baseball. It was cheaper to move the baseball field to the top of the hill than it was to put in a drainage system in that project. Also, it's worth noting that Hart Middle School building renovation began that year. That was another really complicated project because we couldn't move people out. So we had to move people around as things were being renovated. It was quite challenging and I give a lot of credit to that building team, you know, for being flexible and helping to make that happen. Also during that year, we renovated the Caring Steps building. Remember, we bought that building for $2.9 million and put some money into it to get it open. And let's see, we bought it in February on Valentine's Day and we opened in September. So that was quite an accomplishment as well. Cindy?
All right. So thank you, Mrs. Taylor. We went through a comprehensive analysis and RP process for many of the systems and solutions that you see listed here. And then once solutions were selected, we pulled forward any work that we could do ahead of time to get the tech out into the schools. But much of our work had to wait and go hand in hand with construction. So that as they were tearing down walls, as they were doing things, then we would be coming in after that. So as we moved into year three and four, you'll see that we keep repeating the same installations and some of the same, same work. And that was for the next set of schools that were under construction or renovation. And also, our big focus was, was really two things. And that was protecting our current technology and then installing and upgrading technology. So the scope of construction work would directly impact the level of tech protection needed. So for example, if a ceiling is replaced, then we need to protect our data and our PA system cabling. We need to remove cameras, audio systems, PA speakers, wireless access points, and so much more. So even with the best planning and protecting of our, our current equipment, you can imagine what could happen when a demolition starts to say our cabling. So it was, it was a lot of work to be able to protect the technology that we have. At this time, the additional tech that we were able to continue moving forward was some more of those district wide infrastructure type systems. So your PA and clock systems and copiers. Back over to you, Dana.
Thank you. So moving on to year four for construction, this is the year that the facilities, operations center and transportation facility were approved. You remember that at the Liverneys site, we didn't have enough room to park all of our buses for that depot. And that building was really crumbling. And so that renovation really did a lot for that department. It has a room big enough to house their entire staff for staff meetings. We don't do that now because of COVID, but in, you know, when we're past this, it'll be a nice, a nice thing to do. Right now, and in the past, they, when they wanted to have a safety meeting, they broke it up into three groups. And, and it was just not very efficient. So in the FOC addition, what we were able to do there is we put on a prefab building. We added on a prefab building to a prefab building. You can't tell. It looks great. But we put in mechanic space there. So that is where all of the, you know, the oil changes and the maintenance on the buses and the the fleet for grounds, keeping it in that kind of thing. All of that is taken care of there. Also, in that building, the food service staff sits there, custodial managers and things like that. So I love that project. It looks, it looks great. And it was, it was needed. Also during this time, we've been replacing our bus fleet. So we had buses that were 2004, 2005 era buses. And so we have 120, over 120 buses in our fleet, including spares. And we are just now getting to, I think our oldest buses now are 2012, maybe 2012 buses. So yeah, we're getting there. We still need to replace about 18 buses to get it current, but we're doing a lot better with our bus fleet. Also in, that was year four. Moving on to year five. So now we're getting to the end of the projects, right? So Ruthur Middle School, Van Hoozen Middle School, and Stony Creek High School renovations all were approved in year five, 2019, 20. And you'll remember that how we decided which buildings to do first. One of the components to that decision was when were they last renovated? So Stony Creek was a relatively new building to the district. And so they, their, their, their project was scheduled for near the end. Back to you, Cindy.
Alrighty. So in year five in technology, again, we continue to support the installation of new technology while protecting technology in schools that were under construction. So at the end of all of this, from a technology perspective, you know, we have basically replaced our infrastructure. So everything from network switches, cabling, you know, wireless solution, our VM infrastructure. And then we've also replaced copiers and PA systems and clocks. We have outfitted our schools with secure entrances. We've installed smart IPs in every classroom, over 800 of them. We provided laptops to our teachers. We installed audio systems in all of our, our large spaces like gymnasiums and banding fire rooms. We've also done a radio solution so that we're getting to move from analog radios over to a digital solution. And then finally, tremendous number of devices out to the schools in terms of mobile labs. But then we also, in the spring of 2020, were able to purchase one-to-one devices for our students. This was a massive undertaking and we are thankful for the community's support and that we managed to successfully deploy all the devices. Dana?
That's an understatement, a massive undertaking. So in year six, 2021, the most current projects that were, that have been approved, the transportation center exterior stairs, you might remember that it's sort of two story, their, their, you know, buses are parked and then it goes up to sort of like a second story for buses and drivers. And drivers had to walk all the way around like that to get to the, to the building. So they're installing right now exterior stairs. Probably remember that from approving that. Also, baseball and softball, safety netting is going on at the high school ball fields. And then we had some network switches, wireless access points and cabling contracts that were let this year. So moving on to the summary, the cost summary, this is construction costs only. So the board approved budget, you'll see 126 million completed to date, 126 million. Compared to the Plant Moran budget, remember that long ago, that stab in the dark at, this is what it's going to cost at each building was 122 million? And so the variance from, from that budget is about $4 million, but we'll explain how we took care of that. The administration building, we have $2.6 million budgeted in that building to the end. So total construction costs, 125 million, variance from budget, 1.4. So there are some things you'll remember that we took care of on our own. So all of those owner directed contracts, you'll remember those from approvals from construction. Those totaled 1,007. And then we, we earned about 1.6 million in interest in all of those investments that we had of bond proceeds. We spent $2 million out of general fund for the, for the transportation center. It was, it was just more than what had been budgeted in the Plant Moran study. And the board approved that. And then some of the food service equipment that we did when we were renovating buildings, we were able to pay for that out of the food service fund. So that helped us. So total with reconciling items is about 2.3 million variance from budget. So out of 185 million dollars, that's pretty good. So moving on, we'll talk about upcoming and delayed projects. Cindy will talk about the technology items, and then we'll talk a little bit about the administration building.
So for upcoming projects, you know, when we started the bond conversations, we strategically we strategically and thoughtfully approached district-wide technology needs and sustainability. And we did that in a couple of ways. We really looked at standardization. We looked at phased purchasing so that we weren't purchasing everything all at one time. And we also held back dollars till the final years so that we could cover possibly a first device or infrastructure refreshes. And we were able to successfully do that. So we do have in the plans from the bond dollars to have teacher and administrator devices refreshed. We're also going to continue with replacing specialized labs like computer programming or engineering. And then we're starting into, you know, year five in many of our technologies. So, for example, the video servers will need to be replaced. So those are some of the things that we have coming up still using of our bond dollars.
Thank you. So we know we have to do something with the administration building. And so back in November, December of 2018, we asked several companies, architect and engineering firms to give us a proposal to do a facility assessment on the administration building. In December of 2018, we awarded that proposal to King Scott and their group to do that facility assessment. That assessment began in January of 2019. They did, they reviewed drawings. They came and actually walked every inch of this building. And then they met with all of the departments that work out of the administration building. There are about 121 staff members that work out of this building. And and you guys know, it includes our technology headend, our executive offices, curriculum, preschool, school age care, athletics, all of that stuff, enrichment. And so it took them from January of 2009 all the way to September of 2019 to finalize that report. They did issue a report with their findings. And then they gave us an option summary. And actually, we met quite a few times. We started out with, I don't know how many options. And through discussions, narrowed it down to what we thought were the viable options. And we're going to take a look at those tonight. The overall condition of the administration building is good, thanks to the district's amazing maintenance team. You guys remember a couple of years ago, the cooling tower had, the fan had broken loose and, you know, I remember, I don't know, I don't remember who it was. It might have been Tom Woodstraw came in and said, yeah, the cooling tower fan is kind of unattached. And if we don't turn it off, it's, it could like bust through the wall. I'm like, well, turn it off. So and then it was a $40,000 fix. And because he's amazing, he was able to fix it for 1,200 bucks. So, but I mean, as good a shape as it is in, this building is failing. And we know that we have to do something about it. The inspection report found four significant issues, and one of the biggest ones is the roof. So not only is the roof failing, but it's failing because the under, what it sits on is failing. And I'll show you a couple of scary pictures. But in order to fix it, you would have to remove and replace the top stone precast caps, seal the roof and parapets from the elements, remove and replace steel lentils over the windows. So it's not an easy job. You have to basically rebuild it from, from the bottom up. The second significant issue is the lobby addition, so the atrium. We've all seen all of the buckets, the 30 buckets lined up, filling up with water at certain times during the year. The damage to that structure over time above the lobby and corridor windows is so severe that remediation is impossible. You would have to tear it off and build it from scratch. Another issue that would be significant is, once you touch something to renovate this building, you have to bring everything up to code. So our public restrooms do not meet current barrier-free codes. There aren't enough restrooms to meet the required restroom fixture count for the size of the building in today's code. So we would have to not only redo all of our bathrooms, we'd have to add more. Also, the stairways and elevators are a problem. None of the stairways within the facility meet current code. So all of the stairways would have to be brought up to current code. Guardrails and handrails would have to be rebuilt into the stairways. Two stair, stairways would have to be enclosed with fire-rated doors installed. The fire-rated doors would have to be replaced in two stairways, and the combustible material would have to be removed in one stairway. New fire-rated doors and frames would have to be installed at the freight elevator on all floors. Sounds expensive, doesn't it? Also, most of the windows are failing because of the water intrusion, because of the problems in the roof. And I'll show you some pictures of those. They've been damaged over time from leaking parapets and a lack of weeping holes. Many doors do not meet barrier-free clear space. Our ramp does not meet a barrier-free code. The stairs are deteriorating, the exterior stair to the boardroom, the one, the big round one out here, does not meet code standards and would require new drainage and replacement of concrete around the stairway. So if you go to the next slide, it's a little show and tell. We will be sending you a copy. This is the paper copy, but we have an electronic copy that we will post on our website and send to all of you to review in detail. But what you're looking at here is a typical issue for the top of the wall where there is stone coping. The roof membrane should go all the way up the wall and under the stone coping. So, you know, that's one of the reasons why our roof is failing. And what you're looking at there is water damage on the third level because of water intrusion. So our walls are crumbling up there on the third floor and above our ceiling. Moving on to the next slide, that show, it shows you some of the lobby addition photos. There are a lot more in the report for you to review. The typical condition, the one on the left is a typical condition of the main corridor sloped skylight. The whole design doesn't allow for free flow of moisture. So all that moisture gathers there and ends up in our bucket. Again, we would have to rebuild the entire atrium. It's, it's way past repair. Stairies and walkways, this is just a picture of a walkway or a stairway that has combustible material. We'd have to replace that. And then, under renovation, you know, we'd have to bring up that, that stairway up to code, which means it has to be enclosed. And then the picture to the right, that is the room under an exterior walkway. So there's just ground sitting or, you know, ground and cement sitting on top of a room down there. You need to remove that room. And then the last picture is just typical level-three window heads above the ceiling. It's just, it's deteriorated because of the water intrusion. Also, you know, the glass, you, you'll see, you know, almost every window you look at will, will be fogged, and that's because water and moisture has intruded. So this building, even though, you know, the guys have done a great job of keeping it up, it's just past its useful life. It's, it's it, it's just in, in major, you know, needs major help. So these are the option summary that we looked at with our experts. And so it, from option 1A to option 4, the least cost option is over 21 million. The highest cost option is over 31 million. Option 1A, so the, the first three options are option 1A, 1B, and option 2 involve renovating the existing building. Option 1A includes new windows, roof, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, doing all the ADA upgrades, replacing the atrium and and, and we would, everybody would move out during that renovation. So if you look at the detail, there's a little over 2 million in, in leased space, if we had to lease space for all 121 people. Option 1B includes all of the things in option now, you move people around and then you, you renovate and then you move. So we do sort of the, the heart model. Option 2 includes everything in 1A plus a new boardroom addition and functional space reorganization. So what that means is option 1A and B, everybody stays where they're at. You know, we know that this building was intended as a school building, not an office building. You certainly wouldn't build a building like this if you were going to build an office building. But this one looks at, okay, does curriculum need to sit next to special education? And what would that look like? How much space do you need? What would that space look like? So that's what option 2 2 entails. And then option 3 includes building a new building on this current site. So this site is not ideal. It's kind of two-story on its own. And so option 3 and option 4 assume that you're going to not have a boardroom on the site that you will conduct board meetings at a school site. And then option, and you wouldn't have room, because you'll notice the square footage is a lot less, 55,000, as opposed to almost 90,000. So that also assumes that we'll build a, like a pole barn somewhere to hold attic stock and take deliveries. So this, these scenarios assume that we won't, like, take in technology deliveries and things like that. That would happen on another site. And then option 4 assumes that we're going to build a new building, only we're going to find a lot to build it on, a lot big enough to build it on. So these are the options that the group came up with, out of all the options that we reviewed. And the dollar amounts that there, also, I should point out that these are old numbers, right? These are, these are pre-COVID numbers. We all know what's, you know, we just had a room put in our basement not too long ago. And the, and the two by fours were $10 apiece. It's ridiculous. So construction costs gone up. What questions do you have?
Michelle?
Dana, on the renovation lines, does that, would that be a complete renovation? Like, would all the flooring be replaced? All the walls be painted? You know, I mean, would it basically be new? Or is it only those, the four highlights that you kind of talked about initially?
Yeah, it's really just infrastructure, right? Bringing it up so that the building is safe. Debbie, do you remember if finishes were included in those? I, I, I think it was just making the building, bringing everything up to code. So some finishes, it probably would be like to make the space more efficient or flow better. I think option 2 entailed that, where you would actually move walls and improve the flow.
Okay. And then going back to the numbers on the bond, so we had 185 million dollar bond. We spent, what was it, 125, 126 million, something like that, right? So does that mean we still have another 60 million to spend? What, what do we have that's remaining?
No, that, these are just construction costs. So on top of this, we have 33 million in technology that we've spent on top of this. We've had, you know,
So what do we have remaining from a, a bond?
That's, that's, that's a great question. We've got about 2.3 million for, or was it 2.? On our cost summary.
Yeah, I think that 2.3, 2.5.
Yeah, that, that's what we have left for the administration building. And then I think Cindy has. Cindy, can you speak to how much you have left? I think she has around maybe 9 million left in technology.
I'm sorry, how much?
Refresh and all of that. I think she has about 9 million left.
Yes, that's correct. Some of the purchases have already been approved through the Board of Education. For example, the recent network switches where we'll be replacing 400 switches. However, those have not been invoiced or, or installed yet. So that is, is still to come, along with device refreshes for 1,500 staff members. And then lab and device refreshes and starting server updates.
We are required in our, in our bond documents to spend 85% of the bond proceeds by April of 2022 and 100% by April of 2023. So all of this is being scheduled out. Cindy, I'm sure scheduled hers out already. And then we just have to figure out what we're going to do with the administration building.
Other board member questions?
Oh, yeah. Oh, go ahead, Barb. All right. Um, just a couple. I know you were talking a little bit about the device refresh for, for teacher, staff, buildings. Cindy, can you speak a little bit to, I know at the beginning of COVID, we had to kind of do a scramble and, and get some devices out of buildings that we refreshed and were able to utilize for students, right? Is that something that now we can go back and we're making sure that, I mean, obviously, the kids are back in school? So is there a deficit in devices that are in the school now that we sent home? Or were we able to compensate all of those with the purchases that finally came in?
That's a great question. And, and we are set basically on all levels at this point. So initially, when, when we started with COVID and wanted to support our students in need, we basically dismantled all of the mobile labs that we had in the schools to support that effort. And that was due to many, many delays with the device, the device shipment coming back from Dell. So in the fall, we finally started getting notice that our devices would be coming, hopefully in, in December. But then we also found some other opportunities to purchase devices. So that allowed us to get in the devices, start the mass deployments, and then we were also able to refresh those mobile labs in the schools. And, and we still have devices available for students. So we're, we're in a great place right now.
That's great. And then one of the other things about technology that you pointed out, and then I have a, just a building question. You know, I think it's important for us to talk about, you know, the bond money was, started five years ago, right? So when Cindy says refresh, like, five-year-old technology is five-year-old technology, right? So I think it's, it's really great, and I, I commend the, the team for working. I wasn't here when the bond was approved, right? So I've got, I came in kind of halfway. So it's good to see just the staggering of the way that we have spent these dollars, so that at the end of the bond, we have dollars to actually refresh and make sure technology is up to code that we started the bond with. It's fantastic to hear. Then, can you guys talk a little bit about, you know, we have 120-some people working in the administrative administration building. I know I asked this question in one of our committee meetings, Dana. I don't remember if you were there or not, but, you know, what is our RCS district campus look like? And, you know, is, is there space anywhere else for any of these admin to work? Is it most advantageous for admin to be in a, in one building and function in that building? Looking at the space that we need and, and, you know, whether we renovate or get new construction, you know, what is the best way for the teams that work in this facility now to maximize their work? Does that make, does that make sense? Like, could the preschool team go somewhere else? Or, you know, do you, do you foresee it being beneficial to, to spread out anyone in this facility? Or do we really want to focus on keeping this unit as its unit and either renovating here or moving somewhere else? You know, is there, is there a hidden room somewhere in the back of a high school that would make sense for, for a team to work that we're not, that we're not utilizing to the, to the best of its capacity? It would have to be a secret at this point.
Yeah, that's a great question. So yes and no. So, so, so we've looked at, we've asked ourselves that question, right? So just because you work here, doesn't mean you should work in an administration building? Or do you, or do, does your function more better align with some, with a school building, with space in a school building? We don't have a lot of space in our school buildings. But we do have, we do have some space, some office space at Caring Steps. And we've considered moving the school age care offices there. And that would not take very much to do. It'd be an easy, easy thing to do. And then it makes sense, daycare, childcare. You know, there's, there, that could be a good fit. We've also considered that, you know, there are some early childhood special ed programs, speech, I think, that happen in this building where occasionally they have children in to receive services. We've looked at spaces, could we carve something out, you know, at one of the elementary schools where little kids would be with little kids, right? So they would get used to that sort of environment. So we have done that kind of work to get the, to think about getting the footprint as small as possible. But when you add a, a boardroom, a boardroom is a big room, right? And you want to keep a big room for that. So, you know, you're, you're not going to find that in a school building unless you, you hold it in, in like an auditorium or something like that. So those are things that we have been working through to see, you know, who, who would naturally fit better in a, in a, in a, in a school building.
I'm, thank you. I'm glad you asked that because that kind of piggybacks on my question, which was, you know, with approximately a hundred and twenty-one staff members, and this is how many square feet? Almost ninety thousand square feet, correct? So what percentage of, or what's the ratio of our personnel here to the amount of square footage that we have that we're not using? I guess that's my question.
Well, so in a school building, you go through the hallways. They're big, right? They're meant for lots of people to navigate through. I can tell you that our, our offices even are big. I mean, we have the space. Why not use it?
Yeah.
If you're going to design that, you wouldn't design a building with super, you know, wide hallways and super big offices necessarily. So we have, you know, ninety thousand square feet for a hundred and twenty people. That's a lot of space.
And is there any portion of this, this building that just isn't being used at all in terms of human bodies filling it?
Well, the oldest part of the building is the original part of the building, and that's the building, that's the part of the building that's in the worst shape. So if we were going to do something, that would, that would be the, the part of the building that would be you know, torn down and something built in its place. And one of the options that actually speaks to that, you'll see in the report that, you know, if we, if we, can't remember what option it is. If we built something on this site, three or four, that would be, that would be one of the things that would have to happen is you would, you know, we talked about a lot of scenarios, like this is a two-story space. Could we put a floor in between and make it, you know, make it put offices up there to better use that space? Could we tear down the oldest part and build sort of a boardroom with a little kitchen and whatever we need in it, you know? But again, those are all expensive options.
And, and if the option was, well, option three and four is basically staying at this site then?
And Well, option three is, option four is finding a lot somewhere. Like, we would need four or five acres, I think, to be big enough to house the administration building and the, and the required parking.
So does the analysis kind of give us an estimate? I mean, in terms of if we were to give up this location, you know, what the district could, you know, sell this property for, basically?
Yeah, so this property is worth more without the building on it. Because anybody else is going to have to, you know, in order to, they, they wouldn't renovate this building for the same reasons that we wouldn't, right? Or, or they would have the same amount of money that we would have into, you know, they'd have to start with the infrastructure and start from, you know, do all the things in option one through three. So so we did have, as part of that King Scott team, they had architects, engineers, and they had a real estate component. And you'll see in these options that they, at that time, they thought this, this land was worth three point two million without the building on it.
Oh, okay.
So it cost about a million six, they estimated. Or no, we'll see. Sell of the land, they netted a million six.
Million six.
By the time you tear this building down and sell, sell it for what it was worth, or, or I mean, or you could sell it and then the buyer would have to, you know, have the expense of demolition.
Right.
You know? My dream was to put condos on the third floor. Get us some unrelated business income. Not possible to do.
I, I guess my question just is like, what is the next step, right? We only have less than ten percent of what we would need from a a bond money left over, right, towards any of these options? They seem quite extensive or, you know, expensive. I'm just wondering, you know, you've presented this now, where we head from here?
If we, if we elected to do one of these options, we would have to borrow the money to, to build the building or renovate this building. So there, there are a variety of options for us for that.
But at this point, you're just presenting the information, more work will be done, and we'll continue talking about this.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
And putting buckets out.
We know we have to do something about it. We just have to really concentrate now on, you know, assessing what it is that we want to do.
More questions? Dana, you mentioned the codes and that does, it adds such a layer of complexity, kind of. And I remember that it seemed like almost every single time we started in on a building, right, over the course of the, the five years of the bond, that became an issue, right? And it had to be dealt with. So yeah, that's not, that's, that's not a surprise at all. And then, and then the other thing, I guess, in, in the form of question, I can make it another movie reference, actually, in Apollo thirteen, which I know is one of Debbie's favorites, there's, there's a scene and, and they're, and they're really starting to, you know, get a grasp of how bad the situation is, right? And the flight director asks an engineer, no, it wasn't the roof. What was it? It was something. Okay, so, so same question. What's working?
Overall is in good repair, just because our, you know, for what it is, our maintenance guys have, and you'll see that in the report, they've, they've, they've maintained it as well as they can. It's just, it's past its useful life. It's crumbling. You know, we're going to have to put some major money into it to not only bring it up to code, but to, you know, shore up the entire infrastructure of the building.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Is that a complete presentation, Dana? Yes. Okay. All right. Very good. All right. So moving on to additional business, citizens present at the meeting, that would be via Zoom. And at this point, I see no hands raised. Oh, no, one, one hand now. No. Brent Raymond. Let's see, let me click this button, Brent. And how's that working? Brent, are you there?
I think I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
All right. Good evening. I just wanted to comment again this week, talk about some of the perceptions that are going on out in the school district. You know, the remnants of the twenty nineteen, twenty school year can be said to have been, you know, the year where families trusted RCS and the school board to make decisions that were based on high levels of fear that were taking place during that time. The current school year is when families realize the district and the board are still not being transparent and willing to engage in two-way communication with parents to inform us of how decisions are always unanimous and not always based on the same fear when we thought the sky was falling a year ago. Why are we still not allowed to attend these meetings in person when kids can be in school? For all of the local home and business owners who pay a premium to live in our community, mainly due to what was perceived to be a better-than-average school district, let me give a preview of what I see coming to us if the board does not start engaging in open and transparent dialogue with the community to fix the dysfunctional system still in place. RCS does not have until next year, next school year, to figure out how to put a functioning educational framework in place. Just this past week, I learned of five more children on my street who will either move away from the area or start sending their children to schools outside of the district. They, like many more to come, are asking themselves, why pay a premium to live in Rochester, Rochester Hills, if the school district is not functioning? If you think funding of the rundown facilities are bad now, just give it a few years when these same people ask for an increase in taxes to pay for the bad decisions that are being made right now. Home prices and tax revenue that comes along with it will not continue to go up forever. Anyone who understands basic economics can see what is coming to our community if we continue to see families leave for better opportunities and RCS competitive advantage further declines. While leaving the district is a privilege for a growing number, we must also realize that not all families can afford to do this. Those who remain must speak up now before it is too late and they are left behind in a district with fewer-than-ever resources, all while they watch their home values decline as families continue to leave. This is something nobody wants, but it's being forced upon us as the board cannot think about the long-term impacts of their decisions. Again, I urge the board to stop the unsustainable dysfunction taking place.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Be transparent with parents about why they are continuing practices that make no logical sense at this point before it is too late. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And no. In looking at the Zoom, there are no other hands raised. So Debbie, members of the administration? No, she's not, not here.
Okay. Yes, just a few announcements. Today at Rochester High School, we held our second pilot for COVID-nineteen antigen testing. We had approximately two hundred plus participants, a lot more children today participated moving forward. We did it in a different location. It ran very smoothly and it was a beautiful day. So we'll get those reports and that information out to the community. We'll also be putting a date out following spring break for families that would like to take advantage of following up with COVID-nineteen testing, antigen testing afterwards. Over the weekend, our colleagues across the district, staff members in all departments had an opportunity for their second vaccination. As of this time, we now have ninety percent of our staff that are vaccinated through Rochester schools. I'd like to thank our community for your flexibility and your adaptability. Today was a professional development day, so our staff could recover for those who were having vaccinations. And we also had an opportunity to do some collaboration time, which was very timely as we finished the third quarter for secondary. We also had, and you may recall, Shenandoah Shafalo, who is our SEL Trauma Response team member who facilitated some conversations with staff this afternoon. Very timely, very motivational, and opportunities as we move forward in supporting our students as they return to in-person learning. And I would like to make a brief announcement, one that I'm really proud of because this is for kids and this is by kids. Our seniors have been incredibly patient to what the scenario is going to look like as we move in after spring break. So I would like to just put a little preview out there to our seniors and to their families. As I mentioned at our last meeting, we had invited students and parents, teacher advisors and administrators to look at opportunities to extend a wonderful senior season coming forward. And I'm pleased to announce that there will be a video by the students that were representative that night out to their senior friends and to families. And we're pleased to confirm that we are going to have a Saturday, June twelfth graduation, three different timeframes for each of our schools. The location will be noted in the days forward, but it will be June twelfth. And all senior evening, all-night parties will follow on June twelfth at their home buildings. So we're pretty excited that June twelfth will be save the dates. You'll see a lot of information coming out about that that will replace the June fifth date that we had originally selected. So June twelfth, save the date. And we're very excited about information about prom, about student walks, about visiting the elementary buildings, some of those traditions that are so important to our seniors. That information will be coming out to their buildings this week. So we're very excited about that. And finally, with spring break coming this week, we just encourage everyone to be safe and to make really good choices so that they can come back and we can come back April fifth and finish the remainder of the school year strong. Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie. Other comments? Dana or Beth? Not at this time, okay. Members of the Board of Education, how about Barbara?
Yeah, Debbie, I wanted to follow up on two things. You mentioned the continued COVID-nineteen testing, and we had some really great participation today, and we're also offering it after spring break. But can you just reiterate, you know, why the district is participating in this and, and how it can end up being beneficial to our district?
Yes, thank you. This opportunity was a pilot program that we were asked to participate in. This company working with the MDHS, S, am I on the right one? The which one? Two H's. Okay. They asked Rochester to participate. They wanted to do a pilot to try different locations with the opportunity to offer free testing to our community to compile information moving forward as to how best to access our, our community. And so we, we were very happy to do so. Two weeks ago, we did it here at the Administration Center. And we did it today at Rochester High. And working in partnership, especially with the executive order coming out with greater testing opportunities coming forward, we were invited to a pilot. We're hoping to continue that partnership to be able to extend that as we move forward.
So piggybacking, piggybacking on what you said about increased testing.
Yes.
The executive order that came out and specifically stating that sports teams or participants in sports events, you know, have to have that additional testing. When I, when I saw that executive order, I thought, well, that's, that's great. But my first concern was, you know, in terms of resources, you know, where are school districts going to be getting the funding to be doing the testing to hopefully mitigate, mitigate the spread? I mean, has the district gotten any direction from MDHHS or the governor in terms of where that funding is going to come from for those tests?
Very good question once again, and I know she made that announcement on Friday. And so we are awaiting what that will look like moving forward, where the funding will be coming into place. I believe by April fourth, we are going to be able to have that put into place. And I don't know if that will come with COVID relief dollars. But I do know that that will be a practice that will be coming through for all of our athletes. So we anticipate getting that information and we'll certainly let the community know. We've been working closely with our athletic directors and our coaches, um, and our building administrative's um, teams. Our sports teams to ensure that that would be a priority and it would be systemic. Spring sports are coming soon, um, and a lot of those participation rates are pretty high when we think of track and the outdoor programs. So we will be spending the next weeks before April fourth, so there'll be many of us um, working. Um, while summer on spring break, making sure that we have those provisions and protocols and those updates in place. Because I understand that each of those athletes will need to be um, tested before they actually go into a practice. So there's going to be some um, creative work that's going to be, be put into place. More to come.
I like how you phrase that.
I, yes.
Good way to phrase it, um, because it does tie into the last thing that I want to ask about, which is. Our, our COVID numbers and quarantine happening throughout the district. And um, at our last board session, you know, I, I thanked you and the administration team for. Putting together that really comprehensive listing of uh, you know, what the COVID cases are in our district in terms of grade level. Um, but you know, I'm, I'm gonna be honest in saying that, you know, there are family members that feel as though it should be broken down by school building. Um, and I know that uh, you know, there are parents that have actually investigated it. And FERPA is not, you know, that is not in violation of FERPA if we were to reveal. Uh, what the outbreaks are at a, at a building level as opposed to a grade level. Um, but can you please um, share for transparency reasons, you know, why is it that the district is taking the route that it is?
And what I would like to say to that, and we are a work in progress, this is, we've done two weeks of that type of analysis. And as we look at our neighboring districts and talk to our colleagues across the county, across the state. Everyone's report is completely different. Um, we're all works in progress, um, and that's why one of the things, and I will refer to this quickly. Back to what we always speak about, about being cohesive and having systemness. This work, this, this particular venue of the quarantine and the data, data compiling. Is not cohesive within the system. So for example, what, what we get from the county, what we get from the state. And what we're living in our, our daily operations within our organization provide different data points for us. And we are working through that to maneuver how best to report to our community. Um, we've had some conversations with um, our, our attorneys in terms of privacy. Elementary principal for many years, everyone knows who may have been exposed or those kinds of things. However, just out of the dignity of um, our process moving forward. We are working really diligently at the building level and we've had some conversations with our building principals. That will have those personal conversations with parents about the dynamics, but we haven't yet come to a place of reporting. That out specifically. And one of the things that, that came to mind with that, and I was talking with Tiffany Golladay about this. Is reporting out different buildings where there may be different outbreaks and what that represents as a system. Um, is that equitable? Does that put different um, bias on different situations? So all of those things are part of the conversations that we're having. And what we really appreciate from the board and, and primarily the community is. Um, the, the gift to be able to give us some grace in terms of how we build this in a continuous improvement model. We want to be accurate, we want to provide that information. So this last week and the one you will get this week is a, a moment in time, which everyone says, what is that moment in time? Um, we have our building administrators on Thursday at noon. Report the cases that they have that are active, um, that have gone through the whole week. Some kids will have been quarantined, some will be off quarantine. Um, but it's a, it's a timeframe that we have a snapshot only of our district. Um, to help provide that transparency. One of the pieces that I've talked to several parents are, how do I make those decisions then if it's safe for my children to be in school? And that I would just recommend, this is a moment, snapshot in time, it would not be the only variable. Um, that would be making that decision, our building administrators have become very rehearsed. On what quarantine and um, close contacts are. And we're working with the Health Department um, to, to update those guidelines. And, and I just am very grateful to our staff that have been working so closely with families to help. Understand the why and the how of what's happening with the contract chasing and the close contact. Pieces. I hope that helps a little bit. I could just keep going because it's just language that I never knew a year ago that I.
Yeah, no, I, I understand where, where you're coming from and why you're, you're um. Framing it the way you are. Um, I guess uh, from a parent perspective, I think that um, if the district isn't providing the information. Um, you know, there are parents that are working to collectively get that information out. And I just want to make sure that, you know, the information that parents are getting is accurate. Um, and I, I feel like if it was coming from the district, um, it would help in terms of transparency and accuracy. Um, additionally, and, and I had this conversation with uh, with our board president about this issue. You know, I guess I don't see it as, as a bias issue, I see it as informing families so they can make informed choices. Um, because, you know, we do have families that um, you know, intermingle with other families that are in different buildings. And I just think it's a, a level of transparency that um, we should be somehow um, providing. Not that we aren't providing that transparency in a different way. Um, but it seems to be something that our families are demanding and they're figuring it out, out a way to get the information on their own. I just want to make sure that the information they get is gonna be accurate and I feel like it could be more accurate if it came from the district first, so.
And I respect that and there is an army of us that um, are working on maneuvering that through.
I know anything, anything that we say, and, and especially from the outside looking in, you could say, well, why aren't they doing X, Y, Z? It's, it's as simple as A, B, C, but you and I both know, and I think everybody at this board table knows, that. The complexities of figuring things out, I mean, you just saw the, you know, the business office model of how we have, you know, checks and balances in place. To make sure that we have all of these uh, things in place so that uh, we are functioning and operating in a cohesive way. So I, I completely understand what you're saying.
And I totally uh, appreciate you bringing up the transparency and what our community is, is, is asking of us. And we take that as a responsibility to um, to acknowledge, to um, improve upon. Um, we, we all want the same thing. We all want our kids back in school and we all want them safe. And we want our staff safe. So we all want the same thing. Um, I, I, I think the one thing I would just like to say is the final word with that. In many conversations that my colleagues and, and I'm having with families that causes some, some question about the transparency. This is the biggest piece that I note, um, is that the Oakland County Health Department has guidelines. That by um, the legislator, we need to follow. Um, and then the CDC has another set of guidelines. Um, so we're getting a different variable coming through, but if you look at the last line of the CDC's document, it says. Follow your local health department. So that, that's one thing that causes tremendous stress and angst in having daughters who are in athletics and. The opportunity to miss some of these, these milestones that are everything. It's very challenging when the, our health department isn't saying what the CDC is. Um, I have a lot of um, optimism that there are a lot of people working very hard for us at the state level. Um, and we have local advocates that are coming forward to say, let's, let's, let's connect these dots. Because, because the confusion's causing a lot of angst. Um, and it's doing a disservice to different communities. For example, one community, their health department might say, you're fine, and another one not. But in equity world, we have students who are, you know, playing sports in school and those that have to be quarantined. So the angst is real, the frustration is authentic. And um, you know, the team of colleagues and along with the board. Um, clearly want to ensure that we have an approach. Um, that serves our community and our students the very best they can.
Thanks, Debbie.
You're welcome.
Other items? Okay, couple of things coming up, um, spring break is coming up. Uh, March twenty seventh through April fourth, classes will resume on April fifth. And April fifth also will be uh, the next Board of Education regular meeting uh, to take place at seven PM. April nineteenth will be uh, the next Board of Education work session, also scheduled for seven PM. And um, one more time, we'll highlight the um, uh, save the date that Debbie mentioned of. Saturday, June twelfth for our twelfth-grade families, right, in commencements.
If I may say, it will not be one graduation ceremony, it will be three separate by school. I want to be very clear, there was some confusion if we would just do one grouping. So there'll be a Stony Creek, Adams and a Rochester High celebration and it's going to be amazing.
Great. Well, thank you so much and thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody at home also. Um, we'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting at nine thirty-six. Motion by Mike, seconded by Michelle, uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that, uh, I say aye also, that's five oh, so the meeting is adjourned at nine thirty-six. Thank you.